We're going to go ahead and call the meeting of the Bloomington City Council to order. If everyone will please stand for the place of allegiance and remain standing for a moment of silence. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Mathie.
Present.
Councilmember Bowlin.
Here.
Councilmember Longway.
Here.
Councilmember Emig.
Present.
Councilmember Painter.
Here.
Councilmember Creo.
Here.
Councilmember Black.
Councilmember Creaville.
Here.
Mayor Renner.
Here. Thank you very much. We're here, we do have a quorum, and we're going to... Sorry. Oh, that's right, yes. We do have to... Is there a motion to permit all... Excuse me. Councilmember Bray to participate virtually, and this does have to do with our guidelines as listed in the ordinance?
Family or other emergency.
Some move.
Moved by Councilmember Bowlin, second by Councilmember Mathie. Madam Clerk, could you call the roll?
Councilmember Mathie?
Yes, indeed we do.
Councilmember Bowlin?
Yes.
Councilmember Longway?
Yes.
Councilmember Emig?
Yes.
Councilmember Painter?
Yes.
Councilmember Creo?
Yes.
Councilmember Black?
Councilmember Creaville.
Kim, are you here? Can you hear us?
I can hear you.
Perfect. Good.
Thank you.
We're all ready and rearing to go then. Okay. We have a proclamation. We start with the recognitions. Recognizing February 2nd, 2020, to be Health for Humanity Yogathon Day. And do we have the proclamation, or we're just announcing that, Madam Clerk? Do you know?
I do not have the proclamation.
Okay, so, but we are announcing that.
We are announcing it.
Yeah. February 2nd will be Health for Humanity Yogathon Day in the great city of Bloomington. Okay.
There might be some people here who are here.
Oh, oh, sure, you've got... Okay, I didn't get a copy of the proclamation. Sure. Thank you. Usually I do. Thank you very much, Councilmember Painter. Whereas yoga is an ancient process of keeping the human mind and body in good health, with spiritual training being considered a part of physical training from ancient times in India. And whereas the sun salutations, surya namaskar, is a special sequence of yoga postures that use easy breathing techniques to provide key health benefits. And whereas Hindu... Okay, here, I'm going to make sure I get this correct. Swayama Savak San, HSS, is a voluntary nonprofit social and cultural organization which aims to preserve and pass on the ancient Hindu heritage and cultural values for universal harmony. Whereas HSS is organizing its 13th Annual Yoga for Health for Humanity Yogathon from January 18th to February 2nd, 2020, to take the benefits of yoga to people of all ages, gender, and races across the United States. And whereas many of Bloomington's yoga enthusiasts, local schools, and organizations are participating in this event, and sun salutations can be included daily during this time as part of physical activity and/or spiritual training. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Terry Renner, Mayor of the City of Bloomington, Illinois, do hereby proclaim the City of Bloomington shall recognize Health for Humanity Yogathon Day on February 2nd, 2020, and be it further resolved that the City of Bloomington encourages others to join in this observance. Thank you.
Terry, do you want to recognize? It looks like there might be some people.
And we have some people here who are... Have been involved in this. If you all could stand up, and we... Thank you very much for your leadership in this. Thanks. Thank you so much. Did you want to say anything? A couple of words?
My dear Mayor of Bloomington, Dr. Terry Renner, and then my dear city council members and audience, it's my pleasure to accept today's proclamation, Health for Humanity Yogathon Day on February 2nd. Hindu Samshavaksang is organizing this yogathan all over the country, and thousands of people in hundreds of cities actively participate in this yogathan. In Bloomington, hundreds of residents are actively participating in each year, so we are doing it here for more than 13 years. So this year also, we already organized two major events. On February 2nd, we have a final concluding event happening in YWSCA at 4:00 in the evening, so all of you are welcome to that event. And then from the community, people of different races, different age groups, all the backgrounds are participating in it. So our main aim is make sure that the health is... Through yoga, we want to promote the health and wellness in the community, so that's what we are trying to do. All of our volunteers are helping different community members to learn yoga in general and sun salutations in particular, and then also they're encouraging them to practice it every day. So through that, our community can get... Have health as well as peace. Thank you very much for your... All your support, encouragement in issuing the proclamation. This will have a lot of positive impact in our community. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Thanks for your leadership. Appreciate it. Next, we have recognition of the appointment of Michael Straugh, the Board of Zoning Appeals. Michael, are you here in the audience to be recognized? But let's go ahead and give a round of applause. Thank you, Michael, for being willing to serve. Next, we have public comment, and as I preface public comment in the past, if you want to sit and talk to myself, or perhaps a member of the administration, or other members of the city, and get direct answers, we meet around the fishbowl in the back. They may have the mayor's open house, kind of like a regular town hall meeting, from 4:30 to 5:30 on Fridays before regular council meetings. If you want to voice your opinions without response, that's the situation that we have with respect to public comment. We have two people who have public comment this evening, up to three minutes, Scott Steinle and Dee Urban, in that order. Scott, and then Dee.
Okay, about 7:30 this morning, there were two city dump trucks, plus a clam bucket. They had the entire intersection of Fleetwood at Parkview Drive blocked. If emergency personnel would have had to get down there, or a school bus was waiting, they could not have done it. Now, there is no excuse for this. Had that... Had they not been City of Bloomington vehicles, I'll bet they would have gotten a citation. But because there were sitting of Bloomington vehicles, that was fine. Now, Terry, the roads are there for the people, not so the City of Bloomington can block the cotton picking roads. The other item was when the... The yard waste, Christmas waste, that's to be placed in the parkway, not on the street. When they put it on the street, we have a big rain that comes down, plugs up the lousy inlets. And the inlets were plugged so bad, one morning at 2:00 in the morning, I had to go out and I looked out, and the water was coming up the drive. There is no excuse for that. Start handing out citations, I'll bet you get some results. After I brought... Just shortly before I came down, there was somebody that was walking along on the sidewalk. There was ice on there, and they... Down they went. And I was just coming back from City Hall. I asked him, I said, "Are you okay?" They said, "Yes." But I mean, that does not sell... That doesn't look good. The storm inlets are well below where the curb should be. And there is... It just shows poor management on the city's part. When we had all this brush, let Tim Gleason, Billy Tyus, let yourself, Jim Karsh, let some of the department heads get out there and help the people that are working so hard. You know, I don't know, Terry, what it's going to take for the city to wake up, but things keep going further and further and further and further and further in the red. And you keep spending more and more and more, and the taxes go up and up and up. You'll never be able to tax enough, you won't be able to spend it all.
Thank you. Next, Dee Urban.
Good evening, Kim, Council, Mayor. My name is Dee Urban. I am a resident of West Bloomington. I am a business owner in downtown Bloomington, and I'm a proud member and board member of the WB RP, which is West Bloomington Revitalization Project in West Bloomington. Approximately eight months ago, at one of our board meetings, an opportunity came up to participate with a Connect Transit, Connect to the Future Working Group. And having been at several council meetings that I had simply attended and listened to the cry of some of the residents in the community, this opportunity became available, and I said, "This is a good way for me to serve my community and to serve my city." So I signed up and became a member of the Connect to the Future Working Group for Connect Transit. I am happy to tell you that eight months of learning more about public transit than I ever wanted to know, we have completed a series of recommendations that will be coming your way very soon. And of course, I believe Tim Gleason and his staff will get them first, and I'm sure that they will forward them all on to you. But now that we can say that our connect and our working group is completed, and I can bring my report back to the WB RP, so that West Bloomington can get to work on it, I also want to make sure that you know that I absolutely did say, "This is our recommendation. We have come up with a way to try to be a good voice for those people you heard from, and be a good voice for the transit, and for the residents, and for all around, to bring those recommendations to you." And I wanted to kind of jump right out of the gate and talk to you, so that you knew that I am happy to serve as an ambassador for those recommendations, and you please feel free to contact me personally if you need questions answered, if you want to talk to me, if you want to know why there's a dilemma of empty buses, if that's something that bothers you. I now know the answer to many of those questions. And so instead of letting all that information go to waste, I'm offering my services once again to the city and to you as an ambassador for the work that we have completed. And so I really look forward to all of you looking at our report, and looking at the work that we've done, and being able to come to a consensus on what needs to happen next. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Let me move right along to our consent agenda. Are there any items that any member of the council would like to have removed for separate consideration from the consent agenda? I'm sorry. Go ahead.
7G, G as in guava.
G as in guava. Whoa, okay. Councilmember Math-
7C, C as in cantaloupe.
Okay. Other than items 7, C, and G, are there any other items that any member of the council would like to have removed for separate consideration? Seeing then, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented, with the exception of items 7, in order of which they were polled, G and C?
Some of-
Moved by Councilmember Creo. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Emig. Any discussion on this? Okay, go ahead, and everyone will go ahead and vote on this. Councilmember... Excuse me. Councilmember Bray, how do you vote on this?
Yes.
Okay. Motion carries nine to zero. There are no names to announce, Madam Clerk. And we move right along then to item 7G. And Councilmember Milowonway, you pulled... Just to review yourself? Okay. We'll call you in an hour. Is there a motion to approve item 7G?
Some vote.
Moved by Councilmember Black, second by Councilmember Creaville?
No, I had an actual question on that.
Oh, you have a question. Well, before you ask that, is there a second? Okay, so we have a second by Councilmember Painter, so the motion does not die of a second. No, Councilmember Creaville.
Thank you. I know that the cost of the water monitoring has increased significantly, almost doubling, but I just wanted to confirm that this is still a benefit to the city based on what it would cost for us to have our own people doing all the work.
It's my understanding that it is a benefit to the city. It's one that Deputy City Manager Tyus and I didn't push back, but I asked the very same question with it, nearly doubling. Joe Dartor is with the Water Department, is prepared to make any responses that are required. Would you like him to?
No, I think I'm good.
Okay. Anything else? Okay, we've got a motion and a second. If everyone will go ahead and vote. Councilmember Bray, how do you vote on this?
Yes.
Okay. Motion carries eight to zero. There are no names to announce, Madam Clerk, and I guess we need to have Mobok come back. And then I'm going to turn this over, once all of Milowonway is seated, to Councilmember Mathie, who polled item 7C.
Thank you, Mayor. I just had some questions on 7C. 7C is a contract for scheduling software to help the Water Department. We've had a long-term project to replace water meters throughout the city, and I had some questions. I'm not sure if we want anybody from the Water to come up to answer those, Tim. That's your call on that one. But do you want to launch into these, or do you want to...
I'll tell you what I think I'll do, is Deputy City Manager Tyus worked on this, and even if we're not able to respond entirely to them, we can table the item, get you guys answers. It's not time-sensitive.
Okay, thank you.
Bill, are you ready? I got a list.
Maybe.
So I think that the big one for me is, you know, the price on this is not insubstantial, but the way the contract is written is that this is going to be an open-ended contract that I'm assuming we're going to keep using the scheduling software until we finish replacing all the meters that need to be replaced. And one of my questions is, is how much longer is that? We've been doing roughly 10% per year, is my understanding, but how far in the process are we? How many years of this software are we going to need?
One of the things I'll say is that the meter replacement process will be an ongoing thing. I mean, it won't be something that will end. As you know, as meters age, we're going to continually have to replace them. Having said that, I don't know that the use of this software will be required for the complete future. So it's a situation where we have to continue to replace meters, where that'll never be a thing where that we don't do, if that gets to the part of your question.
That does answer a part of it, yeah. So we see this as this is a more or less software that we are going to use for the foreseeable future.
Absolutely. And the thing about it is, part of it is related to scheduling, but a part of the use of Ferguson as an entity is for that. It's also for inventory and management. That it's a situation whereby the system will be able to help us to better manage inventory, the inventory of the meters. The other thing that it does is that it... There's an app attached to it. When you talk about the use of technology, which I know is a priority for you, there's an app that's a part of this, whereby the folks out in the field will have that on their technology, and they can use that as part of their work to actually replace the meters in the field.
Okay, thank you for that. I guess one of my other questions to go with this is, we've had a process, we've been doing this since 2005, and we've had people that have been assigned to do this. What's going on with those people that have been working on this in the past? So we've had scheduling people, we've had people sending out the letters and everything like that, and I'm just... I'm curious how there... Are there offsets that we're looking at here? Are there people... I know in the past, we've done this for people that have taken retirements. Are we filling back to old positions? What are we doing? I'm curious for that.
Sure. One of the things that is believed by the department is that staff can be... Existing staff can be utilized to do other things. Some of those things can include regular field work and maintenance. Some of the other work would also include like monitoring high users, so that we can tell if there is leakage in the field or in the system, which will help us to recover water loss, but also to help with identifying... Like letting people know, "Hey, you may have a leak. You might want to check this and deal with it," so that you're not continually spending money on water that you're not using. So there are other tasks that can be taken on by the existing staff, outside of the manual entry of both requests, but also of scheduling appointments to go out and do the work.
Okay. And that leads me to my... Another question. I won't say it's my final one. You're not off the hook that fast. So one of the things that I've talked about a lot is I would like to see us move to a system where, right now, we are only aware if there's a leak in a rears, right? By the time that somebody has notified there's a leak in their system, they probably already lost a whole bunch of money from the month passed. We do have water line insurance now and leak prevention that will help that, but is there a path forward that we can see from spending money on this software and what it does, where we can actually, you know, where we can take more often, more frequent readings and let people know before they generated a final bill? Then, you know, right now, we're doing readings once a month after the month is over. Is there a path forward where we can change some things up, where we can do more often, more frequent readings, and let people know before the whole month is passed and they've encumbered that bill?
One of the things that this should be able to do, and I will double-check to make sure that this is something that staff can do going forward, is when you talk about this freeing up staff to do other things, that's one of the things that they could actually work towards doing. The other thing I know, and I don't know that we do this or not, is that there are companies out there that do leak detection. And so we could, going forward, if we don't already, and I... I'm sorry, I don't know whether we do or not, is to work with companies that go out and do that, so that we could identify system leaks on the front end, which is going to help everybody, frankly. But to your specific question, this would free up staff to be able to do more of that type of work. What that looks like, I don't know offhand.
Okay. Last question then is, and I appreciate that answer, and I would like more information on that, but last question then is, the way this is written says that the budgeted amount is going to change every year. Does that mean that we're going to get an annual update, where we'll know what's going on and what the status is?
We can definitely do that.
Okay.
And the way that it... Go ahead.
I'm not a fan of that open-ended contract like that, right? I would like to have at least some visibility before spending that kind of money on an ongoing basis, to make sure it's doing what we want it to do.
Sure. I think that's absolutely fair. And I think I want to make sure that it's clear that this contract would be for the entirety of the year, so it's for up to $75,000. So my understanding is that going forward, it would be... If we continue to work with Ferguson, it would be through renewing contracts, and so we'll make sure that we're clear with you as an elected body as to where we're going.
I'm sorry, I read it. I was reading it as it's going to auto-renew unless we opt out with a 30-day notice. It's going to auto-renew every year. It didn't necessarily for how much, but it just said the contract was going to auto-renew, so...
Let me make sure I said what I meant, in that we will make sure that we're monitoring what they're doing to determine whether or not we want to auto... To renew. So that if we want out, we need to make sure that we're A, clear with you, as to what's happening with the company, and B, providing proof to you that it's worth continuing with this company and the work they're doing.
Okay, thank you. That answers everything. Thank you.
I did want to just to comment that I do know that the Water Staff very often does that, notices before you get a bill, or if there's an unusual amount. I've gotten two calls, one before I was mayor, and one this past summer when I was mayor. Now, my water bill didn't go up because I had the insurance, but you know, I've had staff, when I had a leaky toilet, I don't know, like 10 years ago or something, someone called me and said, before I even got my water bill, said, "You realize that your water usage is way off the charts?" So I don't know that they catch everybody, but certainly the Water Department seems to have been on that, and I want to applaud them for that. But anyway, I'm sorry. Mayor?
Oh, sorry, you're not. I was ready to make a motion to prove you have another-
Once you go ahead and make a motion, at this point, once you go ahead and make a motion, then we can-
I'll make a motion to approve 7C as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second, okay. Who said... Second by Councilmember Black. Okay.
A follow-up question. So it sounds to me like we're still switching from manual to this RT technology, right? There's still some old manuals out there.
Correct.
But we'll continue then to replace even the newer technology ones over time, correct?
That is correct.
Do we have any idea of like how many of the manual ones we still have left to replace?
I don't know standing here now, but I can get that. We can get that for you. I will absolutely get that for you. I don't have a number as of right now, but I can... That's something we can get for you.
Okay. Do you... And when Jamie talked about the 10%, do you think that replacement rate will lessen when we're just upgrading technology versus the manual to technology ones?
Absolutely.
Okay. It'd be good to know what that change rate will be, because I'm assuming it'll lessen the contract maybe that we have with this company.
We will get that for you.
Great. Okay, at this point, there's no further discussion on this riveting analysis of water meters. We'll go ahead and vote. Councilmember Bray, how do you vote on this?
Yes.
The motion carries nine to zero. There are no names to announce, Madam Clerk. And now we can move on to our regular agenda. And our regular agenda first is informational only. It's consideration in action on classified IMRF retirement awareness, as requested by the Human Resources Department. And again, this is informational only, and I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to our city manager, Mr. Gleason. Tim?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Now, we have two retirements and related payments that we need to disclose under the Local Government Wage Increase Transparency Act. The act requires the city disclose certain items. We have two retirements to provide disclosures on tonight. Dave Young, who is the Facilities and Events Coordinator at the BCPA, and Dave's in the audience, and also Greg Calaveg, who is a civil engineer for the city. All of the information the city is required to disclose is in the packet and is also up on the screen. Happy to answer any questions.
Questions of Mr. Gleason. Councilmember Bowlin, excuse me.
Do you have any idea how many more will be coming forward? Because I know that the policy has changed, and I'm just curious.
Actually, Josh, do you have an answer? And well, come on up, and I'm going to-
We need you to speak into the record.
And I'll do some filler. You know, this is one of the sickly buybacks initiatives that council gave very clear direction and have been addressed- Now, my water bill didn't go up because I had the insurance, but the, you know, I've had staff, when I had a leaky toilet, I don't know, like 10 years ago or something, someone called me and said, before I even got my water bill, said, you realize that your water usage is way off the charts. So I don't, I don't know that they catch everybody, but certainly the water department seems to have been on that, and I want to applaud them for that. But anyway, I'm sorry.
Mayor.
Yep.
Oh, sorry, you're not. I was ready to make a motion to approve.
Once you go ahead and make a motion, at this point, once you go ahead and make a motion, then we can.
I'll make a motion to approve 7CS presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second, okay. Who said, second by Councilmember Black. Okay. Councilmember Cravill.
Follow-up question. So it sounds to me like we're still switching from manual to this RT technology, right? There's still some old manuals out there.
Correct.
But we'll continue then to replace even the newer technology ones over time, correct?
That is correct.
Do we have any idea of, like, how many of the manual ones we still have left to replace?
I don't know standing here now, but I can get that, we can get that for you. I will absolutely get that for you. I don't have a number as of right now, but I can, that's something we can get for you.
Okay. Do you, and when Jamie talked about the 10%, do you think that replacement rate will lessen when we're just upgrading technology versus the manual to technology ones?
Absolutely.
Okay. It'd be good to know what that change rate will be because I'm assuming it'll lessen the contract maybe that we have with this company.
We will get that for you.
Great. Okay. At this point, there's no further discussion on this riveting analysis of water meters. We'll go ahead and vote. Councilmember Bray, how do you vote on this?
Yes.
Okay. The motion carries nine to zero. There are no names to announce, Madam Clerk, and now we can move on to our regular agenda. And our regular agenda first is informational only. It's consideration in action on classified IMRF retirement awareness as requested by the Human Resources Department. And again, this is informational only, and I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to our City Manager, Mr. Kalison.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Now, we have two retirements and related payments that we need to disclose under the Local Government Wage Increase Transparency Act. The act requires the city disclose certain items. We have two retirements to provide disclosures on tonight. Dave Young, who is the Facilities and Events Coordinator at the BCPA, and Dave's in the audience, and also Greg Calaveg, who is Civil Engineer for the city. All of the information the city is required to disclose is in the packet and is also up on the screen. Happy to answer any questions.
Questions of Mr. Kalison. Councilmember Bowden, excuse me.
Do you have any idea how many more will be coming forward? Because I know that the policy has changed, and I'm just curious.
Actually, Josh, do you have an answer? Yeah. Well, come on up, and I'm gonna.
We need you to, yes, speak into the record.
And I'll do some filler. You know, this is one of the sickly buybacks initiatives that council gave very clear direction and have been addressed, so we're going to see more of these, probably more so, starting in February, March, and April council meetings because we have a handful of retirements that'll be effective April 30th. Josh?
Well, Don, to your question, next month, we'll have three classified employees.
Could you speak into the microphone, please?
Oh, sorry. We'll have three classified non-union employees who'll go through this process, similar to what we're doing tonight. We'll also have five union folks who are also impacted. And then, actually, we'll be doing negotiations with Lodge 1000, the water group in particular. That will happen this spring for a similar process to follow within the coming year.
Thank you.
Sure. Any other questions?
Questions, yes.
Just a comment. That's good. Good news.
All right.
Councilmember Mathie.
Josh Lawyer, before you get away, I just think it's worth repeating that the steps that we took in October, we knew that there was going to be a cost, and we knew that unfortunately some people were going to take retirement sooner than we want them to because I don't think Dave Young should ever be allowed to retire. But we know, we did an analysis at that time, that the estimate would be a potential impact of about $3 to $3.5 million in early retirement, but if we didn't do this now, the impact in 10 or 12 years from now could be as much as $13 to $15 million. So I just think that that's worth very repeating, that we're seeing a whole bunch of people retire now, and it is going to cost us money, but it's not costing as much money as it would if we took no action.
That's correct.
Yeah.
And even with these accelerated payments, these are estimates based on the tools we have made available that are provided to us by IMRF. Again, it's an estimate, about three months after someone retires, we actually get the true bill in the mail, and we pay those, and typically, they're within 5% or 10% of what we see, but sometimes they're a little lower, sometimes they're a little higher, just like you get with any bill. But yes, you're correct.
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Oh, excuse me, I'm sorry.
Move we approve.
No, there is no motion. Yeah, this is just for information only. Okay. Next, we move on to something, and if you're ready to make a motion, you can do that, Councilmember Black, and that is, we have consideration in action on a resolution authorizing the initiation of map amendments to the official zoning map for properties in the city of Bloomington to amend the errors and make the map consistent with the previously adopted comprehensive text amendment for the Bloomington Zoning Ordinance, Chapter 44. And we have Katie here. I'm going to go ahead and first turn it over to Tim, and Tim, I guess to Katie.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is an item that could have been placed on consent, but just given the topic and some of the discussion that we had last year in 2019 and some of the improvements, we felt a quick presentation by Katie was appropriate, so Katie, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Tim. So I'm going to go briefly through a little bit of background, talk about how we got here, and then talk about next steps. Like Tim said, this could have been on the consent agenda. It's fairly routine, but we welcome any opportunity to educate everybody about the changes that happened in March 2019. We're already in 2020, aren't we? So for the Planning Department, we have two real tools with respect to zoning. We have the zoning text, which is kind of the written regulations. These apply to all properties within the city of Bloomington. The text spells out and defines the districts, it defines development standards. In some cases, like our Gap district, it might divine kind of building features and architectural features, but it applies uniformly throughout. And then we have the map, which is a visual representation of the text. And so every year, by March 31st, the city is required to adopt an official map that shows all of the changes that happened to the map in the previous calendar year. And so the map really shows what the zoning is for a specific property. When we do changes to the map, it's not affecting the other properties in the city. When we do changes to the text, it does affect other properties, and it affects the map. So changes to the map, no change on the text, changes to the text, changes on the map. Like I said, we have to adopt an official map by March 31st, so we're getting ready to start that process, and we just want to clean up any errors that might be in the current map right now. This year, we had three rezonings. The first was four properties on the corner of Morris and Chestnut. We took them from R1C to C1. We had a historic property in the White Place District that was protected and designated with the S4 zoning overlay, so that is now shown on this map. And then we had a piece of property on East Tuana Barnes that was zoned from B1 to agriculture, and that came, I think it was in September that we saw that. And then we also had about 400 properties that were affected by the zoning text amendments that we adopted in March. So with that text amendment, just kind of a recap, what we did is we consolidated a lot of our business districts, ones that were redundant, and then we got rid of the B3 district in the downtown and created three new downtown districts. So this is a little hard to see, let me pull it up there for you. The B1 district was combined with the C3 district. The C2 district was combined with the B2 district, and then, like I said, we eliminated B3, which is mostly downtown, and created three new downtown districts. The D1, which is like a central core, and then the D2, which is a transition, and then D3, which is the arts and warehouse district. And so there are about 401 affected properties throughout the city. This map is the map that was included in all of the different public hearing meetings. We had three public hearings throughout this process. This was presented to council, it was included in your council packets back in March, kind of really showing those areas that were impacted and those new districts that were created downtown. But of those 401 properties affected, only 372 were notified, and we figured this out by going back and kind of updating our databases. And so the city's main mapping database is our GIS system. It's called the Geographical Information System. I don't know how many people have used it before, but it's really based on different layers of data. And so the layers might have different shapes, they might have different textures. One way to think of it is like a taco dip. So, right, I know, everybody's getting hungry, I'll hurry this up. But you've got different layers, and they're different textures, and so when you go to extract data, you go to scoop into your taco dip, you might get some tomatoes that you didn't want, you know, because they're touching and they're there. You might also decide that you want more beans or more meat, and so you got to go back and clean it up, and that's what we're doing right now. So when we scooped to get our data, to pull it out, we found that there were 43 properties that were affected. Of those, 14 were included in the original notification, but we didn't want them to be. So those are like those runaway tomatoes that we didn't really want, right? So we're going to go change those back to the original zoning. 29, we didn't even get, they just didn't come in the query, so we're going to go back and notify those property owners and let them know that the zoning had been changed, the text had been changed, and then that has some implications for their zoning on their property. And we found that the reason we didn't get them is because a lot of them are condominiums, and so our parcel layer, our taco seasoning, whatever, layer, doesn't even have onions in it, you know? So these, this data is not even in there, so we had to cross-reference it with another database. So I think it was a really good learning experience about, you know, some efficiencies that we can, we can implement to make it more effective, and now everybody's hungry. So just to go through really quickly, a property parcel pertains to a piece of land that maybe has an address with it. Condominium parcels might pertain to units within a building, and so our layer has the property parcels, doesn't have all the condominium parcels. So you might have one building with one address that has multiple pins associated with it. So when we talk about the 197 pins, it's not necessarily 197 properties or 197 different owners, it's just 197 different units, basically. Next up, council would, tonight, we're asking you to adopt this resolution that starts the publication process, and then we would mail notices to all the property owners. We have a public hearing in February with the Planning Commission. Anybody who wanted to comment on anything would have a chance to share their views at that time. And then we would bring this back to you in March for final action, and then adopt our official zoning map, which is clean and shows all the changes by March 31st of this year. So with that, that's our recommendation. Please adopt the resolution, and any questions?
Councilmember Black.
Thank you. And thank you, Katie and staff, for all the work on this. You know, I don't know what tomatoes did to you, but that is, you're really hating on them. No, what I've enjoyed about this presentation is that, and one's previous, Tom David Reiner did a really great job of explaining when we were starting this whole process, how, why we're doing it, how we're doing it, and how we get to now. And I just really appreciate the succinctness and the clarity with the metaphor, because I get a lot of questions about zoning. I have Gap, and so there's always different issues that come forward, and I've shared the YouTube video from these conversations that help people kind of understand why we do things the way that we do and why it is so complicated, and why it takes a long time to move some of these things forward. So I just commend you for the work that you've done, and I appreciate you making this, people don't get jazzed about talking about zoning, but you make it interesting, and it helps us be educated to go educate the public as well.
Councilmember Mathie.
I agree. You know, even from the beginning of the process, where you guys were doing a lot of the public hearings and everything, that there was a lot of communication up front and a lot of analogies that have been used over time to describe why we're doing this. So I agree with the process. I was just wondering if you could share an update. We had some, the border edge, the western edge of Demets Grove neighborhood, we had said we were going to do a separate study on and how that affects. We're not talking about that tonight. I was just curious if you could share an update on that.
Yeah, I have recommendations back from the consultant that was working on that. Hoping to take those to the Planning Commission in February or in March. I think the way the recommendation is going, we're going to look at creating a separate zoning district for that area that's kind of more specific to the older neighborhood.
Okay, perfect. I was, like I said, just had heard anything on it a while, thought this was a good opportunity to get an update.
Yeah.
And then we've still got a sign amendment, a signed zoning change that's coming forward too. I know we're working through the process on that as well, so definitely looking forward to seeing updates on that as well, because I get a lot of questions on the signing one too. And if nobody else has any, you have a question? Okay, then.
Thank you. Thanks, Katie. I assume the answer is yes, but this redesignation of zoning, will that affect taxation?
Correct.
Okay.
We're not changing anything that wasn't business to some other classification. Everything that was business is still business.
Yeah, okay. And in terms of efficiencies with all of the taco salad dip creation, do you foresee going forward that the map will be clean, like by March 31st, 2021? Will you have these same gaps potentially, or in other, is it just the nature of the taco dip that this is going to happen again?
Philosophical. No, I think what, one thing that we can do to improve is try to look at one of the layers that we have in there and kind of the data, and fill in those gaps in the data. I think it's probably going to be an ongoing project that we can work on and see if we can bring in some interns or see if we can get some other, other people to help with, but definitely trying to improve the taste of the taco dip, you know, for all quality.
I move that we.
Approve.
Thank you.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second, motion made by Councilmember Imig, second by Councilmember Painter. Any further discussion? If anyone can go ahead and vote. Councilmember Bray, how do you vote on this?
Yes.
Okay. Motion carries nine to zero. There are no names to announce, Madam Clerk. Thank you very much, and thank you, Katie, and thank you, Tim. And speaking of Tim, Tim, I'm turning this over, City Manager's Discussion. Oh, excuse me, you have Finance Director's Report, which I guess is a subset of that, but.
We are. First, the monthly Finance Director's Report, and with Katie's item, I mean, you see why we did this on the regular agenda, you know, just for the entertainment value alone, so.
I can get some Rotten Tomato references in here, no problem.
There you go, Scott.
Pause. There we go. So fortunately, the positive trends continue with our revenues, which are actually, you know, as I discussed last Monday, or last Tuesday, are translating into the 21 budget. Trends are still positive. Our Rotten Tomato telecom, that is actually, from what we're seeing, actually stabilized. So we're roughly realizing about a $33,000 per month under budget in telecom, and that's $400,000 annual, so, you know, we'll be dropping that, the telecom budget is $2.4 million annual, we'll be dropping that down by two, down to $2 million. And the portion of that that's related to the new, or the increase in utility tax that goes to the pensions, it's about 40%. So, you know, 40% of that $400,000 is going to affect what's going towards the pension, so about $160,000. I forgot to mention, you know, it's the same, same exhibit every month, so I'm going to try to highlight some of the nuances and some of the, you know, behind the scenes or technical components like that each month. The other thing I wanted to comment on, I'd like to talk about local use tax. I've talked about that every month, but you look up at Home Rule, you know, we went, we had $23.2 million budgeted for the year. The prior year was $22.7, so we took it up a little bit, but it's running under budget, but it's still doing well. It's $10,000 under the prior year, but local use tax, that's that online internet retail sales that we're getting related to that change, you know, the expansion of the legislation that happened October 18th. You know, that's really, I mean, it's working well for the city. You can see in 2019, oops, don't let me point here, I use the mouse, so people watching see, $1.9 million budgeted, and we took it up to almost $2.4 million, and we're $141,000 ahead of budget. So, you know, it's not compensating, I mean, it is compensating fairly well for any drop in the brick and mortar Home Rule sales that we may be suffering from stores closing. So that expansion is going to continue. I've mentioned this before, January 21, online retailers that meet certain criteria are going to have to start collecting the local component of those taxes, so we're going to continue to see some benefit from that. Franchise tax, I don't talk much about that. We're over budget for the year for that, and that's really related to the newest cable metro net. We weren't really sure what that was going to be realized, so we were conservative on that one, and so we're pretty pleased with that. And then local motor fuel tax, wanted to highlight that as well. Reason I wanted to speak of that, first of all, it's $85,000 ahead of budget year-to-date, and then on the next schedule, when we get into the revenue expenditure schedule for general fund, I have just kind of a high-level comment on that because 100% of the major tax revenues that come into the general fund related to local motor fuel tax get transferred to the asphalt and concrete fund. So from the general fund standpoint, you know, it's great news, but it's a wash when it comes to that income statement. I know this is still small. We've removed a column. I'm going to work with Scott Sprouse for the next one, and maybe put this into a PowerPoint to see if we can expand it. So let me comment on the format, first of all. There used to be a column right here that was just the net between the budget and the year-to-date, that essentially was a calculation that showed what's remaining of the budget. If we were to spend or earn all the revenues or the expenditures and zero out the budget, what would be left? Well, we really don't typically speak to that column, so I removed it for visual sakes so that the more important columns are easily, more easily seen. I wanted to comment also on the projection column. Last month, we, I just highlighted, we were updating the material changes that we were aware of. Well, as part of the budget process, the coming year budget process, we work through every single line for the current year. So the projected for '20 is part of the 21 budget process, where we load into the system a projection for every single account, you know, 4,000 accounts citywide, I'm not sure exactly how many for the general fund. Now, you know, some of these can really, they can still change significantly before the end of the year. I'll use an example of the economic development rebates. So whether or not, you know, these developers meet those, you know, we could have a few hundred thousand dollar swing before year-end, but at this point in time, our best estimates, you know, revenues up by a million, you can see the categories here in the expense, salaries, vacancy-related, you know, almost a million under, and then benefits, you know, nearly $2 million over, and, you know, really, most of that's related to the sickly buyback that was just discussed previously. It was, it was expected based on the decision by the council, and part of it's the IMRF rate increase that went into effect on January 1st. I don't know why I have trouble with that. And then we've categorized, or we've captured all the other adjustments that we know of so far, contract. the IMRF rate increase that went into effect on January 1st, I don't know why I have trouble with that. And then we've categorized, or we've captured all the other adjustments that we know of so far, contractuals, I mentioned that before, the legal reorg. So, tracking down the projected year-end, so we take the revised budget, any adjustments, this is a projection that we're shooting for for the year, we have a $292,000 net use of fund balance projected right now. I'm saying net use because we've added in another data point at the bottom here for a reference to the restricted fund balance that's part of that net use. So, the restricted funds that we were using for the year were the BCPA/Creativity Center Roof Repair, originally budgeted $775,000, but it's coming in at around a half million, and then the pension reserve use for the year, which was originally budgeted around $300,000, but it's gonna be higher, we're gonna use more of that reserve because of Telecom. So, about $1,065 of restricted fund balance. So, really, our total available fund balance for the General Fund started the year at $22.1 million nearly, as of right now, it would end up at about $22.9 million, even though we're showing a net use of fund balance, because a large component of that is restricted, so we're using restricted to cover the expenses, those expenses. So, a little bit of accounting, but, you know, at the end of the year, when we're reporting on our audit, you know, we're starting to give you a heads-up as to some of the kind of like accounting nuances to fund balance, and the restricted versus, you know, the unassigned, and how we really just kind of wanna deal with one income statement, though, so splitting it out at the bottom. Forgot to mention that last month, we were at a million net use of fund balance, we're at, you know, roughly $300,000 right now, really, a lot of that is related to, you know, revenues continue to grow, and, you know, the expenses are coming in under, I mean, those are stating the obvious, but the trends and the revenues, you know, we start conservatively, and then we start, we're seeing each and every month that comes through, we get more confidence, so we can bump those up. Enterprise funds. My typical comments on this are related to revenues, because with the enterprise funds, we have these budgeted use of fund balance, $8.3 million, 307, you know, all capital projects, so we're really, we're really budgeting for those funds, they're gonna show a use of fund balance or, you know, a deficit for the year, but it's planned, it's for the capital projects. The revenues, all coming in, we've got a little bit underage in Sewer, we think that's really because we just, there was a budgeting issue with that, so a little bit of overestimation there, but everything else coming right in. The arena, this is the Venue Works component, they're at $1,046, their year-to-date budget is 1.2, so this month, they're actually a little under for Venue Works at the arena, but their year-to-date loss budgeted was $441,000, and they're at 353. So, this is kind of showing the expense controls that are occurring there at the arena on the entertainment side. Again, you know, for the public, and a reminder, the arena fund is two divisions, basically you have the facility side that has the debt in it, and then the entertainment side, which is Venue Works, and so, I'm commenting right now specifically related to the Venue Works revenue and their loss for the year. And then golf, $1.6 million year-to-date, last year they were 1.7, so ending fund balance right now, we're showing a deficit. We're anticipating that golf will need a subsidy from the General Fund of about $100,000 for 20. And that's it for this month, any questions?
Questions, Scott. Okay, seeing none, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Appreciate your work. Mr. Gleason.
Thank you, Mayor. There's the events for the upcoming couple of weeks upon the board, and then a reminder to the community more so, this Saturday, right here, we will have a special meeting, our legislative update, Senators Brady and Berkman, and Representatives Summer and Brady will be in attendance, that starts at 9:00. We'll have a light breakfast that's served at 8:30. And while there's really not set agenda items, the discussion topics that we expect are all four of them, with the 101st General Assembly starting this week, it'll give them an opportunity maybe to speak to us about what their expectations are out of this General Assembly, out of this session. And then also, it's an opportunity for us to reaffirm what our four capital project asks are of the state of Illinois that we submitted last year. That's all I've got.
Can you, just for the record, what time does this begin?
9:00 this Saturday morning, 8:30, though, is light breakfast that we're gonna serve before the meeting's called to order.
Great, thank you very much, thanks. At this point, the only thing I wanna do is to say that what an incredible job the Chamber of Commerce seemed to do every year in their gala, they seemed to up the ante, and that was on Saturday. And also, another event, I was trying to clone myself and be three places at the same time, there was a series of celebrations throughout Bloomington, actually, for the Chinese New Year, which was also Saturday evening, and of course, a series of celebrations over the last week on Martin Luther King and the national holiday of Martin Luther King commemorating the Civil Rights Movement in America. At this point, that's all I had. Members of council, any comments? Councilmember Bowlin.
This past week, I had an opportunity to bring a Boy Scout troop into the chamber, and they were put in charge, they sat in your seats here, and they voted, and their parents had to sit out in the audience, and I think everyone had some fun. And then more on a serious note, I would like to speak to our public comment policy in relation to Olivia Buss's comments about why or how we don't respond. I don't know if most of you know, for five years, I stood on that side of the podium talking, and so I have a lot of compassion for the courage that it takes to get up and speak in public, but several of you remember when the public comment was only 15 minutes, and now it's a half an hour. So, I think that we moved forward quite a bit, you can talk about anything you want, and the best way to talk to me is to bring back the art of face-to-face conversation. I'm very open-minded, I'm happy to meet with anyone, talk about anything, so I just offer that as a solution, thank you.
And just to clarify, that's part of what, the idea is sometimes aldermen have come to the mayor's open house, so people can get answers immediately, and they can often talk to their alderman if they come as well, especially when we've had hot issues. But anyway, Councilmember Mathie.
Thanks, Mayor. I just wanted to give a big shout-out to the Convention and Visitors Bureau for all of the work that they did in organizing and running the event for the Route 66 eSports tournament, and it's very easy to see how they have maintained the sheer number of events, of large-scale events that we get, like the basketball tournaments and cheer and dance state competitions, because the events are just run very, very professionally, and all the i's are dotted and the t's are crossed, and so, the event went really well, I'd be happy if we have a year where central Illinois weather didn't have a factor to play with it, but it still went pretty well. And that's all I wanna say, I think that CVB did an excellent job.
Great, thank you very much. And Councilmember Crable, and then Carillo.
Thank you, Mayor. Just going forward, I wanted to remind people about a cool event coming up this weekend at the BCPA, it's actually three theater performances, run through the Coalescence Theater Project, it's going to be this Friday at 7:30 PM, and then two other shows this Sunday at 2:30 and 7:30, and just some description of it, I'll read from here. Let's see, "The Coalescence is proud to present the sampling of some of the incredible works that are being written by talented women, trans, femme, and non-binary playwrights from around the world. There's also going to be some local actors in those, it's only $10 for each performance, or 25 for all three, so I think it's gonna be a great performance for a low price right here in Bloomington." Thanks.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Carillo.
Yeah, just a reminder that the first community conversation that is being hosted by the McLean County Museum of History is tomorrow at 6:45, and then that particular conversation will be centering around labor. Then, February 7th is Tour de Chocolat, so don't miss that, plan to spend your Friday downtown with us. February 8th, so the next day, at Mount Pisgah, the Market Street Council, which is the group that has been organizing to get a grocery store on the west side, will be doing an update, and I believe that meeting is open to the public. So, again, that's February 8th at Mount Pisgah, and let me see what time it is, 5? Okay. And then, last but not least, my next community council meeting is February 13th at 6:00 PM, also at Mount Pisgah. That's all I got.
What time is that?
That's at 6:00 PM, so it's the second Thursday of the month, every month.
Every month, okay, good. Thank you very much. At this point, oh, sorry, Councilmember Emig.
Just one more event that's happening this Friday, February 1st, I believe Alderman Black also mentioned, Fully Defend Yourself, February 1st, all-day Saturday. This is hosted by BCAI School of Arts, and the focus is really to provide the community a free conference that is about self-protection. So, there's everything from cybersecurity to kind of living with trauma, and how to be resilient in the face of that. So, I just wanted to put it on your radar, and I can send out more specific link information just for you to share. Thank you.
Thank you. At this point, is there then a motion to adjourn?
I moved.
Oh, excuse me, did you have a...
Yes, I didn't know. Alderman Bray.
Oh, excuse me, Alderman Bray, yes, thank you. Anything that you wanna add?
Nothing further, thank you.
Okay, is there a motion then to adjourn?
So, I moved.
Moved by Councilmember Carillo, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Crable, all in favor, standing by by saying aye?
Aye.
We're adjourned. Thank you, Kim.
Thank you all.